Before we get going tonight, the meeting will go a little different. Every year by law, we have to reorganize the Board of Education. So, we will be doing some housekeeping before we get into the actual meeting contents. So, what you'll see is we'll accept the, we'll do the MSBA Board Meeting Review, accept the certified election results, and we'll give Michael and Alice an opportunity to say a few last words, and then we'll adjourn the old Board of Education. At that point, then we'll administer the over of office to Beth and Kyle. After that, then Dr. Berger will take control of the meeting, and then we'll elect a new President of the Board of Education. And then whomever's elected President of the Board of Education, then we'll assume control of the meeting, and then we'll go and finish the Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer. And then we have standing committees that we'll have to go ahead and we'll fill those out, and then after we do that, then we'll be able to, we'll continue on with our regular items there. So, it'll take us about five, 10 minutes to go through all that. So, just be patient with us as we reorganize the Board and get through the minutia of what we have to do. And the reason we're having it on a Tuesday night instead of a Thursday night is by law, Board of Education has to reorganize within two weeks of the election. So, that's why we, so the election was two weeks ago today, and so that's why we're meeting on a Tuesday night instead of a Thursday. So, that's just the, you know, what the law tells us. I have six o'clock. Make a note that all Board members are present. That's a standing joke, how hard I hit this, is how magic it's getting. [Music] Okay, I need a motion, I need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda.
Don't move.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. MSBA Board Meeting Review.
To the April edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report, we begin with a look back at MSBA's Advocacy Day event held on March 28th in Jefferson City. Preparations for the event took place throughout the month of March. MSBA's spring virtual meeting and a series of lunch and learn webinars on a variety of topics prepared school board members for their meetings with legislators and provided information on several legislative issues now before the Missouri General Assembly as it heads for its May adjournment. Senator Carla Esslinger spoke during the Advocacy Day event in the Rotunda of the Capitol and emphasized the important role of school board members in the legislative process.
That your service and your dedication to your community and your children is what makes this work. Because without a school board that reflects the community values and the school reflecting that back to the community, this whole democracy thing doesn't work. Okay? And you have to have the opportunity at the local level to control what is good for your children.
Also during the event, the Carter D. Ward Excellence in Advocacy Award was presented to Keisha Lee of the Ladue School District Board of Education. This award is given annually to a past or present school board member who excels or has excelled in advocating for public education. Keisha stressed the importance of collaboration when dealing with the issues facing public education.
The problems facing us are multifaceted, but not impossible. While the challenges in rural, urban, and suburban areas across the state look different, on the surface, many of our problems are very much the same. We must start to work together by looking in your neighbor's backyard and across the street for resources and collaboration.
Advocacy Day also included a student showcase at the Capitol where students from 20 school districts throughout the state were on hand to discuss and demonstrate innovative programs in their districts. Missouri's first lady, Teresa Parsons, visited the showcase and saw firsthand the amazing students and programs from across the state.
Our students are the next generation of leaders. So, when our young people are set up to succeed, I believe that our communities and our state definitely will benefit from them. Today, we're excited to have the students, each of these students here, with us to display their showcases and to share here in Jefferson City. So, after visiting these outstanding programs in our schools, you will know that our students in our state have a bright future ahead.
The deadline is approaching fast. To sign up for your district's free Emergency Operations Plan Development Tool, MSBA, in partnership with the Department of Public Safety, is offering a subscription to the Missouri EOP Development Tool at no cost for two years, but you must be signed up by June 1st of this year. There's no time element for completing the Emergency Operations Plan. The only time element is for participation. So, please, sign up now and take advantage of this crucial school safety resource. Visit the MSBA website for more information. Make plans now to attend MSBA's Summer Summit, June 16th and 17th in Branson. Join school board members and leaders from across Missouri to learn about emerging trends and hot topics in education. It's a great opportunity to participate in valuable sessions and to connect with colleagues from school districts throughout the state. Also, be sure your Board is represented at the June Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Summer Summit. Delegates will be electing officers for the coming year at that meeting. And last, but certainly not least, if you were elected to your school board for the first time this month, welcome to school board service. Missouri law requires all school board members to receive 18 and a half hours of training within their first 12 months of service. MSBA's CBM Essential Board Member Training fulfills this requirement and provides the foundation for becoming an effective school board member. The training is free for all new school board members. Check the MSBA website for a schedule of the training opportunities along with registration information. So, with that, thanks for allowing us to have some time at your Board meeting, and we'll see you in May for the next MSBA Board Report.
Does anyone want to add anything to that? Okay, I know Elizabeth sent out an email whether or not you wanted to go to the June training. Elizabeth, I'm gonna go. And then I know I think Mary's gonna go. So, if you want to get ahold of Elizabeth, whether you're not gonna go or not, and then you two can have a conversation with Elizabeth to see if you're gonna go or not. So, anything else on that?
Just wanted to mention that I will be traveling to Jeff City this Thursday with Missouri School Board Association for weekend meetings, so give you a little rundown on that when I get back.
Be safe. Anything else? Okay, next item on the agenda is accept the election, certified election results. I need a motion to accept the election, certified election results.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion, second. Any more discussion?
Who was the first? Sorry.
Erin.
Thank you, David.
Okay. Okay. Do you got that?
We don't think so.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, ladies first. Alice, would you like to say your final words?
I hope they're not my final words.
Your shirts is all.
I know, my sister gave me this when I retired from Maryville. Thought it was fun to wear tonight. It has been an incredible honor to work with this Board of Education and with the Wright City Schools and the teachers that I've come to know and worked with. I just really appreciate that I've had this opportunity, and I want to thank you all for that.
I'm not gonna stand, but I'll show you. Just, I'm reiterating, thinking, this, I got into this because my nephew had a difficult experience as a teacher, and that's kind of brought me to this, and I got so much more out of it. This is such an amazing group, so congratulations to both of you because you're working with such a great group of people. Thank you to all the teachers and the parent professionals and all the administrators because one of the benefits of being in this role is you get to see all the great work that happens at those schools, and it's those people that are in the classrooms every day. So, from the bottom of my heart, I truly appreciate it. It has been certainly an honor and a privilege. Not done. You'll laugh at me, I promise.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I need a motion to adjourn the old Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All opposed? Yeah, over office. So, at this juncture, we'll turn it over to Amy and/or Elizabeth.
Hi, Amy.
Hold on.
I'll fix the correction.
Alice, thank you.
Oh, I know, I know.
So, those little things, Elizabeth. Those little things.
Absolutely. I mean, this, yes.
I appreciate that. Hey, I think we're heading to the door today.
Yeah.
It's hard to find, it was a rush.
Is this a birthday present?
Uh, great, great, great. Oh, great.
Hey, Michael, take a name tag. Oh, yes. Alice. Take a name tag.
Oh, that one.
Yes. And also, you took the blue one with you.
Yes, I forget, yeah. I got that one.
I don't have to get another color.
You think I'm gonna forget who I am, huh?
Maybe, you never know.
I'm getting old.
Heidi, Beth, and Kyle. Are you going around? All right. Have you raised your right hand? And where you come from the sheet where it starts, "I do solemnly swear..."
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of School Director and and for the Wright City School District, County of Warren, State of Missouri, to the best of my ability according to law.
Okay, I think we've got our new Board seated. Congratulations. And at this juncture, we'll take nominations for Board President. Do I have any from the floor? Nominations for Board President?
I'll nominate Austin Jones, since he will accept.
Second.
Do have a nomination for Austin Jones. Are there any others? Seeking that appropriate wait time, isn't he a good teacher? Could I have a motion for nominations to cease?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Mary and Heidi, all in favor of nominations to cease, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, Mr. President, I'll hand you back to the gap. Thank you. And thank you for your vote of confidence. I appreciate it. It is humbling every year when you go through that, so I appreciate that. At this point, we will take motions for Vice President.
I'll nominate Aaron Williams.
I'll second that.
Okay, is, are there any other nominations? Okay, I need a motion to cease nominations and elect Aaron Williams by acclamation. So moved.
Seconded.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven zero. Congratulations, Aaron.
Don't you Jeremy get to come with me?
Well, hey, we might just leave you down there. Maybe have both ends covered. Secretary, Dave Micus is current, the current, was the current Secretary. So, any nominations for Secretary?
I'll make a motion for Dave Micus to continue being Secretary if he accepts.
I would second that.
Okay, are there any other nominations for Secretary? Okay, I need a motion to cease nominations and elect Dave Micus as Secretary of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Treasurer, I need a motion, I need a nomination for Treasurer, please.
I'll nominate Mary for Treasurer.
Second. Okay, there's a motion, there's any other nominations? Okay, I need a motion to cease nominations and elect Aaron Williams by acclamation. So moved.
Seconded.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven zero. Okay, next thing is the MSBA Delegate and Alternate. Last year, I was the Delegate, and I would like to continue if the Board is okay with that.
I was the Alternate, and I would like to continue also.
Can I make a motion for both of you at the same time for Delegate and Alternate?
Yes, you can.
So moved.
Seconded.
So, there's a motion to nominate Austin Jones as MSBA Delegate and Mary as Alternate, and we want to cease nominations and elect by acclamation. Is that what I heard?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
I need a motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, next thing we have is the Waiver Committee. This committee has not met in several years, but the purpose is if anybody needs to attend a district that lives outside the district, it is the responsibility of this committee to act on behalf of the Board of Education and either allow or just allow those individuals to attend our district. We need three Board members. Last year, we had Heidi, Michael, and Mary. So, obviously, I guess Heidi, do you want to continue on that?
I need to remove myself from that one, please.
Okay, so, Mary, do you want to continue?
Yes.
Okay. So, we need two new Board members to do it, and so...
Yeah, I'm one.
Okay, we've got Beth, and who's the other one?
I will be glad to do it as well.
How far my baptism? So, I need a motion to nominate Beth, Kyle, and Mary to the Waiver Committee and cease nominations and elect them by acclamation. So moved. There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Okay, next thing is the MSBA Delegate and Alternate. Last year, I was the Delegate, and I would like to continue if the Board is okay with that.
I was the Alternate, and I would like to continue also.
Can I make a motion for both of you at the same time for Delegate and Alternate?
Yes, you can.
So moved.
Seconded.
So, there's a motion to nominate Austin Jones as MSBA Delegate and Mary as Alternate, and we want to cease nominations and elect by acclamation. Is that what I heard?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
I need a motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, next thing we have is the Waiver Committee. This committee has not met in several years, but the purpose is if anybody needs to attend a district that lives outside the district, it is the responsibility of this committee to act on behalf of the Board of Education and either allow or just allow those individuals to attend our district. We need three Board members. Last year, we had Heidi, Michael, and Mary. So, obviously, I guess Heidi, do you want to continue on that?
I need to remove myself from that one, please.
Okay, so, Mary, do you want to continue?
Yes.
Okay. So, we need two new Board members to do it, and so...
Yeah, I'm one.
Okay, we've got Beth, and who's the other one?
I will be glad to do it as well.
Fire my baptism. So, I need a motion to nominate Beth, Kyle, and Mary to the Waiver Committee and cease nominations and elect them by acclamation. So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. We are members of the Greater Warren County Economic Development Committee, and as such, we have a district representative. Last year, Mary was our representative. Mary, do you wish to continue with that, or would you like to...
Yes, I do. I'd like to continue.
Okay. So, I need a motion to appoint Mary to the Greater Warren County Economic Development Committee District Representative and cease motions and accept by acclamation.
Seconded.
Seconded.
There's a motion and second on the floor. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I didn't hear, I didn't hear anybody say.
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have that, as we made the motion seconded? Okay. Policy Committee. So, typically, before we do Policy Committee, there is one piece of cleanup we need to do. So, right now, with Beth and Kyle being elected to the Board, there are four members on, there's four of us on the CSEP Committee, so one of us needs to drop off because we can't have four Board members there. Aaron?
Mr. Jones, I will drop off.
Thank you. So, actually, we forgot to add it to the agenda, and I apologize. So, going forward, Kyle, Beth, and myself will be the Board Representatives on the CSEP Committee, and Aaron will no longer be there, so we're not, we don't have the core on that committee. Okay? And then finally, Policy Committee. Jeremy, which set of policies are we going to be going through this year?
It's EE Support Services.
Okay. So, typically, we have two members and then a, an alternate. Last year, Heidi and Aaron were on the Policy Committee. Do you wish to continue?
I'm happy to continue. If Kyle or Beth are interested in doing that as well, I don't want to... Yeah, I would like to serve on the committee or as the alternate. Okay. Either way.
So, Heidi?
I'm the same. I would like for the newer Board members to be on that one because I think it's important, but I'm happy to serve as the alternate or continue either way. Doesn't make any difference.
So, Beth, you want to be on it, and then Kyle, you want to be the alternate?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the three members would be Aaron and Beth, and then Kyle would be the alternate?
Perfect.
Okay. So, I need that motion, and then cease by acclamation.
Seconded.
I'll move. I'll make a motion.
Dave made it.
Dave made it.
Okay, so, Dave Micus made it, and Mary seconded.
And that's her, Beth, and Aaron, and Sir, on the committee, and Kyle, the alternate?
Yes.
And maybe Heidi?
Yes. So, Elizabeth, in the future, just tell these guys to speak up, you know, I'm here. Okay, there's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that concludes the Board Reorganization portion of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is public comments, and from my understanding, nobody's signed up, correct? None. Okay. After public comments, naming rights, Bloom Gold. Kyle will be, I think Kyle said he paid for West, so you're going to, that's the one you're going to abstain from. So, I need a motion to approve these naming rights without West, and then we'll do West separate, so Kyle can abstain. So...
Make a motion to approve, that's a blanket?
No, but you wanted to take West out.
Oh, yeah. The rest, minus West.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, hold on a second. So, there's a motion and second to accept the naming rights, Sands, Name Drive at West. Any more discussion? So, these basically were sold at Bloom Gold, and we thank the sponsors, the people who paid a lot of money to the Bloom Gold to do this, so... Okay. Any more, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven zero. Now, I need a motion to name the Drive at West.
So moved. Seconded.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Six zero one?
Same.
You did not put it. It takes a second, but you're right.
And then finally, we have, next, excuse me, not finally, we have the West presentation.
All right, thank you, Board President. Good evening, everybody. Hey, first, I owe all the parents an apology because I told you that we'll put you to the front of the agenda, we'll get you out here about 6:20 or so, so I apologize, we're going to take a little bit longer here. Here in a minute, the kiddos are going to have a presentation, but first, I want to get out a volunteer award at West. A couple weeks ago, in our foyer, our librarian, Jen Hunt, and Eve Colby were out unloading a bunch of books from a book competition we had, and I don't know how I missed it, but I had never introduced myself to Eve, so I went up and introduced myself. Hi, how are you? I come to find out, Eve has been helping West for quite some time. She has a librarian's background, she helps shelf books, she helps unpack new books, she just pretty much does whatever we need at the library, and she volunteers her time. So, I just wanted to take tonight to recognize you, Eve, and just let you know how much we appreciate everything you're doing for West, for the district, and for our kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will get out of it, too.
Thank you so much.
All right, so now what we're going to do, and it's kind of hard to see over here, but we've got five kiddos on the floor, and we've got one kiddo with a lawn in his hand. And, you know, literacy is a big focus for grades K through three, so I wanted everybody in the Board to see exactly what every kiddo is doing every morning to support and basically establish a foundation for reading skills, writing skills, spelling skills, okay? The kids do a daily drill every day, and I thought it would be cool to bring them in and let them do their daily drills, so you guys can see them doing it, and they can run with it on their own. This is a second grade class, these are Ms. McCroy's kiddos, and here we go, Ms. McCroy, whenever you're ready.
Okay, DJ, go ahead. O-U trout out. O-U trout out. O-U soup ooh. O-U soup ooh. O-A boat o. O-A boat o. O-E toe o. O-E toe o. O-W snow o. O-W snow o. O-W plow out. O-W plow out. S-H ship sh. S-H ship sh. T-H thumb t. T-H thumb t. C-K sock k. C-K sock k. I-N-D find I. I-N-D find I. B-bat buh. B-bat buh. D-dog duh. D-dog duh. Torian? A-I base A. A-I base A. A-Y? Hold on, buddy, look at what you're pointing at. Here's the I. I pry I. I pry I. I high I. I high I. O-oxo saw. O-oxo saw. O-ho-o. O-ho-o. O-no-o. O-no-o. E-N-R. E-N-R. E-P-E. E-P-E. E-M-E. A-apple a. A-apple a. A-safe A. A-safe A. A-aquorn A. A-aquorn A. O-E toe o. O-E toe o. O-W plow o. O-W plow o. O-W plow o. W-H. W-H. O-U soup ooh. O-U soup ooh. O-U trout out. C-K sock k. C-K sock k. Can we? Yes. T-Y-T. T-Y-T. L-Y-L. L-Y-L. N-E-S-S mess. N-E-S-S mess. I-S-H ish. I-S-H ish. F-U-L fool. F-U-L fool. L-E-S-S less. L E S S less.
Jordan?
A R car R.
A R car R.
O R horn oar.
O R horn oar.
E R her er.
E R her er.
I R bird er.
I R bird er.
You are bird er.
You are bird er.
Kami, will you do a top four?
Four.
Four, yeah, four drunk.
A I base A.
A I base A.
A Y play A.
A Y play A.
E E tip E.
E E tip E.
E A E E.
E A E E.
E Y T E.
E Y T E.
O I coin oar.
O I coin oar.
O Y boy oar.
O Y boy oar.
O A boat o.
O A boat o.
O E toe o.
O E toe o.
O W snow o.
O W snow o.
What's your phone?
All right. Hey, I want to take a minute here. I mean, that was great. You can see the drills. You can see how we just grind that into that, those foundational skills. But I want to pump Miss Hickman's tire a little bit here because Andrew here, that's AJ's little brother. AJ's over here in the striped shirt and Miss Hickman, he was voicing, he was sounding those out.
He turned around and took him.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Foundations is great. It's all about just those foundational skills. It's engaging for them. It kind of has a multi-sensory aspect to it, too. This is not all they do. This is just their worst, this is the first thing they do. I never held this. So kiddos, thank you so much. You did a good job.
Good job.
And again, parents, I told you six thirty at the latest and I made it in less than a minute. Kiddos, you enjoy your night. I'll see you bright and early tomorrow morning, okay? And then the next thing we're going to do is I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Carrie Biggs. She's going to come up and give out another award tonight. So Carrie, come on up.
I'm doing a certification for the Warren County Labor Club. They donated to Operation Backpack Cash and food to. Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you all. I'm president of Warren County Labor. I'm Rod Herman. Steve Dussel is vice president of our organization of labor, carpenters, electricians. I'm a retired gas worker out of St. Louis. I worked for La Clea Gas. Now it's called Spire. But we wanted to do something. We are basically an organization that's a satellite of tri-county labor out of St. Charles. They've been around for 35 years. Steve and I both sit on the executive board. And coming, I moved out here about four, about three years ago, built a home and decided to retire and became involved with this organization. And shortly, I was, ended up being the president. Don't know how that all works. I don't know. But we wanted to do something because tri-county labor does a food drive every year and they have massive pickup loads. And they're a machine. What they've taken over the years and have improved on, and Steve and I, and thanks to his wife Tina, we got together in our small group. I told Steve tonight, we are up to 24 members. And like we said, we, I didn't, I thought, I didn't want to promise nothing. I thought I'd come in with a cardboard box and say, here, thank you and do your best. We had my truck loaded. And we had, from the community and business owners here, Right In Right City and some out of Warren County, wanted to donate canned goods and they wanted to donate money. So I got, I have the money. It's only $400, but we're hoping to do this again after talking that we want to do it this fall for you all. And I took it back to the organization and told them how many kids and what all it does and what the group does on handing it out. And it was an education for me, you know, and I think it kind of hit home with some of our folks. So hopefully, we can help you out again this year is what our goal is, but we want to thank you for your time and.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the C SIP reports. So anyway, any questions on the central office report? Okay, the middle school?
I have a question and I'm sorry I did not get this in time and report questions. And it's kind of an overarching question and maybe it's just me misunderstanding. Middle school ELA, high school ELA, maybe a couple other areas. We seem to be doing really good, like proficiency wise, until December and then it drops into February, February. Is that because we're teaching something different or are we losing something over Christmas break? What's happening?
It's a good question. We'll be able to field it.
I'm going to, Chris, do you have anything you want to say to that or I can answer? Go ahead.
Yes, I think at this point, we just don't know exactly. December could be an outlier score. So we're following the assessment plan as written and then collecting all that data that the test.
This is the first.
Correlate that. What data can we trust at this point? So we just completed our evaluates for April, which will be reported in May. And then our back score, our back testing is just beginning, so we're really looking at what numbers can we trust.
Yeah, the December one, we've talked about this before, that the number of days that you've got in there before we get out on break seems to be some hindrance. Historical trends, we had that in December, January. I don't have a larger answer, but I did, I'd like to see that, you know, the trend was good as we went. Especially, I was going to tell you, ELA two, which is tested area, was really strong the last couple of months, so that was a good trend line.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely increased since then. I'm just wondering if we know what that is about and if there's anything.
January two, I don't know if that, you know, the time to pack in what they need to content wise and if those tests completed and that. I've heard a little bit of that from teachers, just anecdotally, but is that, are those months, do they trend a little tougher in some of the question, too? Yeah.
Right, and that's the, is it, it's not, they're not testing on the same curriculum. It's new curriculum every month, so.
You know, in those months when we have done every month, which we've done this, I think, the third year now that we've had every month, I think, both in middle school and high school.
Well, thank you, guys.
You know, and I was, I was just going to bring up the fact, too, a little bit, you know, as you start getting into those, you know, winter months, we've been doing this September, October, November, December, you know, and this has taken up a day or two of your class to take these. You get a little test fatigue in there, too, and as spring rolls around, it works, you know, the ones that we are most, the ones that are most important to us, when we get like in March and April and then to see if those scores correlate with our new one, our EOCs. And that's the ones that are going to matter more to, I think, all of us as we start looking at that data. Do the scores that we see at the end of that, when we have gotten through all the standards and spiral throughout the year, correlate and match out with where our kids are.
And math and EOCs are testing over all of these things?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
One other thing I'll add, just to set the stage for next month. We won't have April testing because we use an incentive. If we did well on our March ones, then we could just do EOC review and prep in lieu of an April evaluate, so we'll see that next month. I'll have something in there.
Mr. Brooks, an incentive for the students, for the teachers?
Yes. And it seems to pay dividends.
But a serious question, I know, I knew it'd come off a little goofy, but there is a little test fatigue even with the teachers, too. Right, and that they, well, I don't know if it's, it's not the same as the student fatigue. It's that it takes time out of their classroom instruction. And so we're having some discussions about that, very, very initial discussions on the impact of testing every month, I guess.
Dr. Brenda, for your summary analysis of your ELA data, you alluded to that flatlining and recommendation for potential PD around letters. What would that look like moving forward?
That's a great question. I think the district is discussing how do we support specifically our reading teacher. We have reallocated her impact for next year as far as the schedule to reach more kids. And Dawn has done such a great job. I've attended the Letters PD run by her teachers. I think I attended four sessions and my mind was just blown about the science of reading and writing. So I think when we arm our teachers with that, when we still focus on differentiation, we can close the gaps that have been in some of our kids' lives from year end to year out. We just can't seem to close. So I think that might be a missing piece that the district is willing to support moving forward. So I'm excited.
Awesome. And to speak to that just a little bit, you know, goes back to our meeting here in a week or two to begin working on our PD plan for the middle school moving into next year. And that's certainly something we'll be talking about on the agenda.
Awesome. And then other comments for your report. The math data looks promising and it's trending, so that's exciting. And then I also want to point out that your additional metrics that you've included in the back specifically to your target on students checking out books out of the library was very interesting review. And also the health of the school in regards to how many nursing visits we've seen decrease over the year. And then final question, you give a shout out to Ms., sorry, let me scroll here. I'll make sure I'm saying it correctly. There is a teacher that's making adjustments, I think, to grades based on how their evaluate scores are, scores are missed. Can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Oh, I mean, how much time do we have? Our teachers have really collaborated, you know, interdisciplinary and made connections across contents. Some of the most amazing connections that I've seen and witnessed in my years of leadership. So this is Jerry's social studies teacher. So she uses some of the scores in reading and writing and she makes adjustments to meet kids where they're at. And what you observe live is you see high levels of engagement for students because she's meeting their needs, whether it be a challenge or just a small support to meet those expectations for her class. It's really amazing to see live and just whenever I see it, I try to capture it. I send out a weekly email to show them, hey, we're still following our assessment plan. We're still following our C SIP and this is what it looks like.
Thank you.
Anything else on the middle school? West? Special education?
I do. Ms. Brooks, very exciting to see the update on program. This home box running on student placement after they graduate. So I just want to highlight that. See, it's very exciting that we're working with local employers as well as this program from Mizzou to, you know.
Yeah, we've been working with the Mizzou program the last couple of years and then Heidi assisted her in getting her hooked up with some, I think, the ambulance district, and then we do have some kids that are going to be going to Schnucks, too, in Warrenton. So that's, that's great for those kiddos.
Very exciting.
Hey, East? And finally, the high school. Okay, that's just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just kind of have an overarching question slash request. It looks like there's still the discipline data in, in Miss Hickman's report, but I don't, and I, I know you guys track so much, but I do really like seeing the discipline reports and how those trend. If maybe even quarterly or something, would you get those rolled in?
We currently do those twice a year at the end of each semester as part of that, but it's something we can discuss.
Would you, Ms. Williams, are you suggesting like it more than twice, maybe quarterly?
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, anything else? Okay, next one is the new high school updates. I believe we have change orders. So as we're discussing the change orders, one of the things I'd like to hear about is, you know, we originally had an easement and now that easement, there's a change order to it. I'd like to hear why, you know, where we went awry on that and why we're having a bore now instead of doing open whatever. So if you could just, as you just discuss it, you know, talk about that and then we'll go from there. Mr. President, permissible, I've got the East Elementary forum. It's our first presentation. Okay. We'll get that one knocked out, then we'll go to, you know, the high school, then we'll address those change orders. And Brenna from Bond is here. We've got Bobby Christopher and then we also have Eric Purcher is here to help field some questions from Cochran Engineering.
Yeah, so this is really just a quick update to the progress out in East. We have some updated photos here. These are, at this point, a couple of weeks old. So if you drive by, it might look a little bit different, but they've got the exterior walls completed. The CMU portion of that is completed. They still have to add insulation, the air vapor barrier and the brick that'll end up matching the rest of the building. And then as of a couple of weeks ago, they had the interior walls started. They're probably close to finished with those by now. And they've got the concrete floor slab there all poured and finished and they're working on top of it. And then this week, they are supposed to be laying the steel for the roof, so you'll see that gone up there very soon.
Exciting. Any questions regarding the East updates? Okay, moving on to the high school.
I'm Bobby Christopher, Ray Construction. Give you a brief overview of progress here in the last month. So over at the high school, we're still doing site survey, staking, site clearing. We're kind of held up on that at the moment. We're as far as we can go with that work. Grading and excavation, site utilities is kind of full steam ahead right now. And we're also prepping the building pad. So I had the pleasure of being there for the groundbreaking. Appreciate you guys including me in that. For those of you that came out and got to see the hole that was there over the last couple of days, I've been infilling that hole with rock and compacting that lifts. So it's hard to visualize, but there's areas A through H. Right now, we're infilling area A, which is the main entrance, and then working towards B and then working our way east. So kind of starting in the west is our orientation point and working our way east. Looking forward, we're going to continue on with the site utilities. Box culvert placement, box culverts on site ready to go. Just waiting for that clearance to move forward. Grading excavation work in the west half of the property. We're at the point now that once we get the clearance approvals, we'll continue with that work. Site concrete placement, we're really itching to get concrete down. So that's here in the next couple of weeks. It's in the forecast. We're about two weeks out from starting to prep concrete. We'll start segmenting those areas and go into site pavement. And preparation of the building pad will continue. It's about a six-week process from start to finish to bring that up with rock. We don't need it all at one time to start the foundation, so here in about two weeks also. When we proceed with the site concrete, we're going to start with the footings and foundations of area A. So that's right around the corner. We're looking at a fire hydrant here near Walker Road. We had, as we'll discuss here in a minute, PWSD had some additional requirements along Walker Road as far as what you see. I think they call it a pyramid. So they call it a pyramid where it builds up, has to sit a certain way, basically directly in the middle of the easement. So that's what that picture indicates. Next slide, please. So this is just showing ongoing work of the building pad. So essentially, there's a five-foot cut there because we're bringing that up with five-foot of rock. So that's just ongoing pictures of that work. And we've got the detention basin shaped up along Walker Road. So as you're driving down the road, you'll see a, you know, a big hole in the ground essentially, but eventually that'll be vegetated and served much more than a big hole that you see along Walker Road. Has to retain water on site. Next, you'll see the three-week look-ahead schedule and the items you see identified in red. Those are areas that when compared to this to our master schedule, show that those activities specifically are behind schedule. Doesn't mean the project's behind schedule means those activities can't be completed right now, but it shows you the next three weeks of where we're at, where we're going.
Those are your critical bands?
I'm sorry.
Those are your critical bands?
They're not right now. Next slide is the master schedule. We update these monthly with our pay-up. Pay-up will go in by the first of the month, so the pencil copy over around the 25th. When we submit the final copy, we'll have an updated schedule so you guys can see this monthly, the progress of actual dates and how things are trending. But all in all, we're looking really good. Just need the weather to hold out. We had a great week last week. This week, a little rain in the forecast, but hopefully, you know, spring's around the corner, so. Any questions on the progress? Beth, any questions? Dave?
The retention bond, or I don't know what word you used, what do you call the one along Walker Road?
Sure, we have retention base.
Sure, I see right now that it has water in it. Is that going to hold the water all the time?
No, once it's completed, it'll be designed to keep water over a period of time.
My only thought was it's so deep and it's so close to the road. Is any kind of guard rail or anything going to have to be placed there to keep somebody from going down into that thing?
I don't know if there's, is there a fence under?
There's no fence around Walker Road. I believe there's a fence along the internal drive.
drive coming in to the school.
Okay.
Is, that's not in the plan then for a fence to go around that?
On some projects, we see that, this specific basin along Walker Road, there's not many.
Isn't that a safety issue with, what if a kid comes along there and happens to be raining?
To my knowledge, I mean, it could be anything to be a safety issue, but...
I think we ended up putting a fence around the one up there by west, so...
Yeah, by west, that was the one we didn't put that fence around there.
Sure. Was because of, I said, we went, we went water in there, we didn't want a kid going in there and drowning, so, I mean...
So, I, I have concern about that?
By the time we have, I mean, it's going to not be retaining water how far from now?
End of the project.
So, into the project, so by, by the time we have people there, it's not going to have water in it anymore?
Correct.
Unless it's pouring down rain.
Right, and there's sometimes, some events that you can't control, I mean, like last July, we got 20-plus inches and, you know, 18 hours, whatever it was.
But how long would it take that basin to keep that water now?
I think it's designed, it's a 48 hours?
Yeah, it, it varies on the basin between 24 and 48 hours, depending on the design. But those are definitely intended to be dry basins, so only wet whenever there's rain, that you're exactly right.
My concern, even if it's dry, it's deep.
Yeah.
I mean, it's deep, you're gonna, gonna go for quite a ride if you run off the road there on Walker Road. And it's so close to the road, is my thought.
Well, I tell you what, look, so what I'm hearing, well, let's finish the question with you and Amy here first, and then we'll come back to what I'm hearing. Heidi, Mary, you want anything else, or Dave?
I do not.
Mary?
No, not just now. I'm good, thank you.
Kyle?
I do not, thank you.
Aaron?
No, you're going to go over all the change order stuff separately.
So what I'm hearing from that conversation we had about the fence, you should probably just look into something and then just give the board, you know, if there's, you know, what it would take to put a fence around it and you can make that decision. That's kind of what I heard you and Mary saying, right?
Concerned there, yeah, we'll dig into it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby. Mention real quick, Reconstruction is doing what every, did, oh gosh, I don't know why I can ever think of our guy, trailers, Conklin, not Craig, I got him.
Keaton?
Keaton, Keaton, they're going to have a drone every two weeks or every month?
We try to do it every two weeks, but at least every month we'll have new engine for it.
And then also, Cochrane provides that services too, so that's on our website, and I know it's not very attractive yet because it's a lot of dirt, but that's going to get to be a real neat thing, so we let our folks know to, if they can't drive out there, of course, drive on the construction side is probably discouraged. They can monitor our webpage on Prop 6725 and that'll be updated frequently after every board meeting at minimum, usually two or three times a week and get some pretty cool pictures as this project progresses.
And I think the last time we flew it, rather than taking video, I think we just took a bunch of still photos and that's pretty neat too. It's a little less data, but you get a lot of really neat images out of it.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thank you. Change orders, Dr. Berger?
Yeah, go ahead, Brianna. I don't know, we've got that up there, there wasn't an artifact, wasn't outside of the document, but you've, you've got that in board memo, they're summarized, and I've updated that with this latest piece that Austin was pinging on. And I think, Brianna, are you tracking on Austin's question specifically? It really is a lot like what we talked about yesterday, it sounds like, what was the mistake that may, or mistake, what was the, the condition that occurred that put horizontal boring back on the table?
Right, so...
I'll take it, Brianna.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Dr. Berger, so it's a good question, a fair question. So we're meeting with the neighbor, we've had multiple discussions, we've had Kel, who's our utility company out on site, multiple discussions. Excuse me. Long and short of it, is the, the water line where that has to go, apologize, give me one minute. Swallowed bug or something. Long and short of it though, where the water line had to go, it's a tiny meter, you have to stay in the middle of an easement. And what that did, and looking at the survey points, it put you basically through the front 15 feet of this gentleman's driveway. And within that also, they had, I believe they were hickory trees, but it also put you in the drip line of three trees. So looking long-term, this was the most economical approach, rather than replacing, really, this gentleman probably wouldn't have accepted a pass job on this driveway anyway, meaning you would have replaced an entire driveway with asphalt. And with that, you'd also be replacing three substantially sized trees. The cost difference between the open trenching itself and the boring, directional boring for this work was about just under a $10,000 difference. It would have been probably four or five times that had, had there been a need to replace, you know, asphalt on the driveway and also substantially sized trees. So looking at this a second time, the first time, we, we looked at both options without going to the exact points of where we had to go, we thought that open trenching would be more economical, but then looking into actually the logistics of where this line actually had to go, it would have been more costly. This is the more cost-effective approach due to the monitoring power work we have to do.
Yeah, Bobby, I guess my understanding with, talk with Brianna yesterday was initially when it was, I thought where that trench was going to go, I'm a little bit perhaps not remembering very well, but the, we thought that the line could fall outside of the center of the trench maybe, and that, and public sewer, water and sewer district was pretty tight on that, that the, the line has to go in the center of the trench, and that moved the trench over towards the property owner a little more, and that's what created the issue, right?
Yes, sir, and I don't know the exact dimensions of what tolerances PWSD gives you, but essentially you need to be dead center within maybe three inches of the center of that easement. That's not just at this location, that's everywhere to my knowledge, you correct me if I'm wrong. But we were told that as well with the third-party inspections along the Walker Road easement as well, that then we had to be centered there, we couldn't offset it. That was part of the sign factor there as well.
Thank you.
Can I answer all your questions?
That answers mine, but I'm sure you're going to have plenty more here, so.
Sounds good.
So, Dr. Berger, you want to continue the conversation? Well, I just, like I said, I've had those out in board memo, and you've seen them, what we've got up there is the summary, perhaps just anything from that summary that you'd like to ask a question about. I know I filled in several questions this week regarding these.
Aaron, you have anything?
Down the line, maybe?
No, thank you.
Kyle, anything additional?
Not for this particular topic. This change order, is it for all change orders?
All change, all of them, yes, I mean, just change order two and any of the PCO as you can point out. And Kyle, I know it's on your monitor, it's also up there too, if you want to ask a specific question.
So, question one, the majority of this change order is being driven by the requirement to have all hydrants on a closed loop. Can you help us understand how that requirement wasn't initially included in this spec?
Sure, I'll probably...
I can actually answer it. So, Wright City Fire District is unique and they're the only ones that, that require this. They, their interpretation of the fire code is that you need to loop each hydrant, so instead of just having one leak going through the hydrant, you actually have to have a loop, two pipes coming to it. We had multiple conversations with them once we submitted, and the fire marshal wasn't willing to back off of that, even though no other fire district interprets that code that way. So that's why the plans are done that way, that's how they're done everywhere else, that's every other fire department's interpretation of that. We even had conversations with Public Forest Fire District number two, who's a water supplier, saying, hey, this is creating more valves, more connections, more joints for possible, you know, services, you know, what do you guys think of this? And they don't like it either. They, they want it not to happen, they've talked to the fire district several times about it, but the fire marshal is not willing to back off of it.
And can you help us understand either his technical reasoning or his belief in why this needs to be a requirement?
So, from what he described to me, is he believes that by having two water lines coming in that fire hydrant, if one of those lines fails, that he's got a second line coming to it. Not necessarily the case, because they both come off the same main, so one fails doesn't necessarily ensure that you've got water coming from a second, second line. So, that's just his interpretation of things, the way he explained it to us.
Do we know what the chance of a line failing is on average?
Very minimal.
Very minimal.
If never.
And if this change order would be denied, what risks does that open up for our schedule?
It heavily impacts the schedule. One of the first things we do are the water loops, then we follow that by paving. So, other than getting these, you know, placed for open trenching, there's a possibility you can bore them after the fact, but you're also adding dollars to do that.
So we could quickly be impacting our critical path to our schedule, correct? Yes, sir.
Plus, I want to mention too, if you, if you don't accept this, this is what the fire marshal required, so if you don't accept this, he's likely to pull the permit.
Understand. And the cost from a scheduled delay can be astronomical when compared to this change order that we have in front of us?
It can be, yeah, and it's hard to put a number to that, but as you start, the thing you never get back in a project is momentum. So if you don't start off with momentum, if you ever lapse in that, they're, they're trickle along to the end, that could have serious effects.
Just answered one.
I think that, I think that's all my questions. It's just disappointing that this is a requirement being driven by another local authority.
Mary? I'm sorry, Heidi?
Oh, it's fine, just skip me, it's totally fine. I, I mean, Kyle kind of had some of the things I wanted to ask, and it is upsetting that we didn't know about some of these things from other authorities, but my specific question is what is MoDOT demanding as a part of the whole?
So, MoDOT, during the permit review process, part of what's in that change order is for the entrance on Highway F, they made you add a gate, so it can only be accessed at key times if we don't have traffic and buses going after all the time, so that, I believe that's what that made out of this net change order.
Is that gate just for during the construction phase?
No, it will remain.
So it's not going to be a pass-through road as initially planned?
Well, it can be, but it would be, we'd have to, we'd have to apply for that additional permit, and we think that, it's, we'll have limited access to it as it is, you know, but we'll have the gate, we'll, you know, close one when we're not using it, so maybe we envision is, if there is advantages to releasing out that highway, we would do that, you know, but that would be the only time that that would be accessible. If we reapply, because we, and certainly, you know, we've got 40-ish acres, it's probably not quite that, I think the majority of it's on the west side of the creek, but 40-ish acres that we'll want to utilize one day, so we'll be reapplying for a permit for full access there. I think some of the things, this has been, this is back at the traffic study, so this has been several months ago, but signage, perhaps improvements to the road may be in play, but that, it's a state highway, so I mean, it's, Eric, help me, was that the, that kind of...
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's all up, when you go for a full access paved hard surface access, it's all going to be open for their interpretation at the time as you apply for it. Right now, we're a gravel access point with, you know, they understand in the future the school district will be looking to do something more. At that point, they'll have another conversation with them and see what their criteria is for that.
Do you know the purpose behind the gate? I mean, it's just straight so people don't...
Just so you don't have cut-through traffic going through Walker Road.
Probably, okay.
That's what it is.
We might have to table this question, but I thought one of the topics that was discussed during the annexing of the district into the city was the usage of that road, and you really can't use the road if there's...
Yeah, it was kind of long-term planning, certainly something we have had, have had conversations with the city, and I don't think those conversations have, have ended, but would be a potential cost share with them for an east-west road there. And so I think those are still in play, but they're certainly not, you know, sooner than later, I guess.
Well, but all that conversation came up if we ended up deeding that road to the city too, I think.
That is correct.
So, I mean, as long as it's private, and we own it and we control it, so.
I'm good, right down with you.
I have one. Go back, sorry. What changed from our initial conversation with the fire district and our preliminary use of everything at the very beginning back in the planning phases to now?
I mean, we prepared our plans according to, to the requirements way that, the way that we read them, where they didn't apply everywhere else, and the plans were submitted for permit review, and that's when they review and start making comments about, now we want you to put a hydrant here and do this, or loop lines, or stuff like that.
So did we reach out to the districts before we went out for bids for the project and everything? And the fire district never responded, or they responded and they...
That's correct, they had no additional comments.
They had no additional comments, okay. That would add to my frustration.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Okay, this may, I just need to know this, or me as an informed voter maybe, is the fire marshal, is that a Wright City, a county, or is that, what, what, what is that authority?
It's a good portion.
Yeah, so it's the fire district, it, it's Wright City Fire District, but it also covers portions of Florida style.
Okay, but it's Wright City Fire District?
Yeah.
So who comes up with these rules? Is it the fire board tells the fire marshal these rules?
Oh, sorry. There are building codes and all kinds of building codes that each municipality adopts, but then, once a set of drawings is handed over to the fire marshal to review, it's kind of up to them and their interpretation of that building code.
So they don't go back to their board and say, is this the way you interpret it, or is, they don't go to the fire board and say that? Because those are elected officials, as we are.
You know, I, I can't really comment on the workflow there.
No, why don't you go? Well, that's, that's just interesting to me, because, you know...
My, my general experience has been, it's always been open to the, the personal interpretation of the code by the authority and jurisdiction, meaning the fire inspector has the authority to interpret it the way he so chooses. Could it be challenged through the board, maybe, but I've, I've seen it done before and it's generally backed the fire inspector, maybe that would be different here, but that's what we've seen with the pass.
Okay. Thank you.
Dave?
Where in our board packet does it talk about the underground boring that's going to need to be done?
It's, now it is...
Let me look up, let me get up there.
Now it is PCO 9.2R, and then I gave you a deeper explanation of that in the board memo. So I said that nine, and I'll look for affirmation from Brianna, 9.2, or actually, it was 9.1, and that's why I wanted you to note that 9.2R had changed and that it encompassed the, put the horizontal boring back in, in play.
So then, the 9.2 and the PCO 17 are all under change order number two?
They are, all, this whole package is change order number two, to include the credits. So, so it comes out as a net cost, you know, so it'll have the, whatever the adds are plus the, plus the credit.
Okay, and then under, or says change order number two, it talks about associated with revisions dictated by the city, MoDOT and Water District. What changes did the city ask for in this change order?
Yeah, that's a good question too. It's largely dictated by what we just spoke of, there were other nominal, or I don't know, nominal, but other issue or other things dictated by the other jurisdictions, and I'll have to lean on these guys. There, I know one complication of this is they're kind of intertwined, and I know Brianna was trying to give me a lesson on that as well, but let you guys kind of field that.
Well, for the city, the city's involvement, obviously they have their city engineer do a review when you submit for permit, and that's, that's BFA engineering. They did their review and it came back with some comments, as you expect you're going to have comments, and, excuse me, one of the comments was to put concrete swales in the bottom of the detention basins, which is not something that we do anywhere else because nowadays, people don't want the water to get from point A to point B fast, they want to come out on grass and slow and infiltrate before it makes it at alcohol structure. So we had conversations with them on that, and they weren't willing to back away from that, so there was concrete swales added to the bottom of those, those detention basins. There was also an adjustment in the, there's a, a weir in the big basin down by the football field, and she had some comments on that, so we had to do some adjustments to that in the bottom of the basin to address her comments.
I see. And I should say, I think you've kind of... And I should say, and I think you've kind of alluded to it, we expect, anytime you're getting permits finalized and you're working with inspector, there are going to be some issues. Probably, from my perspective and my experience with fire, the things that were dictated by fireworks were larger, and those were probably, you know, I wouldn't expect those, and you don't anticipate of that, that number. But the, the smaller ones, every project I've ever been involved with, you're going to have some feedback from your inspectors that are probably going to cost you a little bit of money, and hopefully not time.
I just, it said the city, and I didn't see where anything from the city had changed. That's all my questions.
Wait, and I, this is not the way, perhaps you gentlemen and Brianna operate, but I'm terrible to quantify everything. What percentage of this change order on the, on the adds is been dictated by fire? Would you humor me and throw a number out there? Without hesitation.
I'm going to say probably eighty percent, because let me, let me reiterate on that. So what the fire district makes you do also causes changes required by the water district, okay? Every time you, you tap a water main to run a line of fire hydrant, they also make you put a detector check or a check valve on that that you wouldn't normally have. So every time you make a loop to a fire hydrant, it's double the valves, double the systems that these guys have to put in, because now water district number two requires after that tap to that main. So it's a combined...
That's the intertwined piece to it, yeah.
Correct.
I was going to say seventy-five percent, I think you're closer to the eighty in that, so.
You done, Dave? He's looking, he's reading the code. Beth, anything else?
No, Dave covered my question, and I was looking for that percentage, so.
The only question is the gate that's on down by F Road or F Highway? I'm talking your way now. But I'm assuming it's just going to be a lock on there or something, or?
We've got to put a Knox lock on there. That way, the fire district has access to it. But in total, you know, the gate is a very small portion of this. Looking at seventy, six hundred dollars total with the gate and the locks.
I'm not worried about them, I, from an operational perspective, you know, if we're going to decide to go out that way, now we have to figure out how we're going to open and close it every day. And, you know, the other idea behind that was, remember when we put that east-west thing in there? The idea was to alleviate traffic off Rocco Road, so that kids that were driving to school, they could come in off Highway F, come in that way and then go into the parking lot, so they wouldn't have to come through the main entrance. So, you know, that was the whole idea behind a lot of that.
I think some of those might still be in play.
Yeah, but now you've got the additional operational thing, where you've got to get that gate open every morning and leave it open until eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, you know, or whatever, whatever time. So it's just operational issues that, that now you have to deal with. Are you ever going to say something, Erin?
I, well, I think your second part of that statement kind of covered. I mean, I, we're still going to be able to utilize that. We would just have to make sure that it's, you know, one of our facilities, people maybe can lock and unlock.
Just to remind everybody, you, Mr. Brooks.
You said you needed to gate duty.
And what was MoDOT's reasoning again, sorry? Was it insurance driven, or?
It, right now, it's, it's to keep from having cross-traffic cutting from Rocco Road over Highway F. They're willing to let you guys use it as either basis when you've done locked the gate and utilized it, but they just don't want to continue on traffic coming back and forth. With the understanding that you guys will be looking to gain access in the future, so that there's another conversation coming when you have an elementary or a middle school planned over there, then that's another conversation, perhaps that gate goes away.
So a question. The district annexed this property into the city, which would expand the city limits uninterrupted out of town down to the school district. I assume that that annex does not include Highway F, and that this MoDOT still controls the road basically as you're leaving town coming out of that?
They still control it, and whether the city annexed it or not, MoDOT would still control that. That's a MoDOT state route, so that would never change.
I got a question about the road. Is it some sort of spec that MoDOT is wanting with this entrance to the, to the driveway? I mean, because what if we told MoDOT we want to use that road immediately as an east-west cut?
And that's going to initiate probably a much bigger traffic study and conversations with them as a major access to them.
And we're probably going to have to pave it.
There may be a turn lane.
I wouldn't think MoDOT could make us pave our private road.
I'm not talking about your private road, I'm talking about Highway F itself. If you want a true commercial entrance, they'll evaluate that much differently and look at it. I'm not saying you have to, but you may have to add turn lanes and widening, and it's going to potentially lead to more things.
I didn't, I didn't, that's kind of my question. I didn't know if it was going to be spec-ed out a lot different in the construction of it to have access to that road all the time, or not.
Eventually, that will, I mean, right now, we're just a gravel, two, two-lane wide gravel driveway.
And those were the conversations, and that's, when the thought of a cost share with potential in the city came up, that's, you know, we were, we were hoping that would be expedited, and it did lose its momentum.
If we have to gate it, then is it worth the expense of putting the road in?
Oh, yeah, I think it is. Oh, you mean the improved road or as-is?
As-is.
Oh, I think so, yeah. I think we're going to, I think we're going to...
The head of getting somebody there to open this gate when needed is going to be?
Yeah, yeah. Definitely, we definitely want access out there.
But then is MoDOT going to tell us that our gate is open too often?
I don't think so, but I think that's a risk, because it's limited.
So as long as there's a gate hanging there, MoDOT's going to go?
I do.
That was what permit was issued, yeah.
Maybe you can lock the gate open.
You always want to be a passenger.
All right. Anything else on the change orders? Okay, we need a motion to approve the Wright City High School change order number two.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven-zero. Thank you. Don't leave. Testing proposals. Okay, Dr. Berger?
Yeah, testing for both projects, the four-room ad and the high school. So, testing was an expected cost under soft cost. It's been talked about from bond architects throughout the project. Don't like the cost, but it seems like every proposal I get, I'm grouchy about the cost, so.
So these were already accounted for in the budgeting process? These are surprise costs, correct?
They are not. I guess, you know, we, that's right. Surprise that I've always, a little aggravated whenever I see these things increase, and I thought this one was a little higher than, than the ones I've worked with in the past. Eric Wilson from Bond assured me he pushed back, and I think he did cut some things out of it. But it is, I don't want to say it is what it is, but maybe it is what it is. We do need testing and observation.
When covered by soft cost, all of it was covered by your soft cost?
Yeah, the number's big, I mean, yeah, and our contingency too. So, yeah, we're, we're good.
Okay.
Beth, I'm sorry, let's just go down the line. Beth, any questions?
No, no questions.
Dave? Mary?
This is the soil testing.
Yeah.
If in a few years we find out something, they didn't do something right, can we go back to them?
Well, that would certainly help support to perhaps direct liability. But I also want to go back and, oh, Mary, if you look at that, those proposals, it's, it's quite surprising probably for a layperson to look at all the testing that goes on for construction and project like that.
Anyone know how the soils are here.
Yeah.
Anyone who has a basement knows how the soils are.
Compaction, and if you remember, we used SCI before the proposal early on on soil testing out on that property. Was that been a year ago, Dr. Way, maybe eighteen months ago? So we've, we've used SCI infrequently, and we want to formalize the proposal, because we know they're going to be doing a lot of testing for us, so we want to get a grasp of the cost.
Heidi?
I don't have any questions, I already asked, thank you.
Kyle, anything additional?
As it did not take all of the soft cost, is that money that's left over able to be used in other areas of the project?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Erin?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
I'll make my motion now, approve the testing. Sorry.
Is a motion to approve the testing, any second?
Second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven-zero. Okay, board meeting dates. So, going forward, these are the dates that we're proposing to meet. Typically, the third Thursday of the month. Couple things is, we have a board workshop on June eighth, which is, we're going to talk about the budget. And then basically, April twenty-twenty-four, the two weeks after the election, that would be that Tuesday, or the sixteenth of April. Other than that, what we've got on here is on the twenty-ninth of June. That's the last Thursday of the month, and that's basically for budget, and then we would basically approve our budget that night. And then on July, we would talk about board goals, whether we want to continue with them or just meld them into the CSEP and use them. And then also, now that we have two new board members, this would be a good time to talk about our agenda format and get their input on what we want to do there. August at our tax rate, and then rest of it's just, you know. Obviously, in January, we'll have the additional board meetings for superintendency evaluation and stuff like that, so we'll come up with those dates in December.
Can I just comment real fast? And we don't have to change it, but if anybody does anything for Christmas, Christmas is the Monday following our board meeting. And I assume everybody's kids will be out of school that Thursday, Friday. So, I'm okay, but I just want, think hard. I don't know that that's the best December meeting date.
I'm okay with the December date, but...
Okay. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. Christmas is Monday, we're going to have a meeting on Thursday. If anybody goes anywhere, might think twice.
School's out on the twentieth.
Exactly.
Nineteenth is the last day.
School's out Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Do we really want to have our meeting Thursday evening?
Then you would be bringing administrators back in on their day off.
I would prefer to move it to...
Move to the fourteenth?
I would prefer.
Well, be that or it can be due on the nineteenth, Tuesday.
I'm good with either or, I just don't like the twenty-first.
Do kids go to school on the eighteenth, though?
On the nineteenth.
Eighteenth and the nineteenth.
They're out there.
On the twentieth Wednesday is where it breaks.
Even then, doing it the nineteenth, I mean, if administrators wanted to roll out...
It's a good catch, the nineteenth would be...
I don't like any of that, I would prefer the fourteenth.
Administrators are here all the time.
All the time, all the time.
So, hold on, hold on. So, I think Veronica needs to have input, because the bookkeeping department has to be able to get bills prepared.
We're good.
Well, then, Erin?
I would like to propose we change that twelve-twenty-one meeting to twelve-fourteen. Other than that, I'm good.
I have a, I have a question on the August meeting. That's the, that's during the state fair, and I do know that last year, we did it, we was able to do it a Thursday after, which would be the twenty-fourth. Can we set the tax rate that next week?
So currently, Dave, August, okay, I'm catching up with you. Seventeenth. You're asking, so we're all agreeing that we're going to move the December date to the fourteenth? Okay, now, August, so the proposals to move the August date to the twenty-fourth of August.
We used to have it at the last moment, because we were waiting for numbers.
For AVs.
We thought we would be okay, so that's, so.
As long as it's in August, we should be good.
And we're always at the state fair that week, and I do remember this year, we had it on the twenty-fifth, so that was the week after.
Okay. Okay, so, anybody have issues with August twenty-fourth for the set of tax, for every regular board meeting, but also would be, that's when we would set the tax rate? Anybody have any issues with that? Okay? Any other, any other of the dates, anybody have any concerns with?
I bet my team caught it, was it the Tuesday or the Thursday prior for the December one?
We're going to go December fourteenth.
Okay, December fourteenth, Thursday fourteenth, okay.
I will not be able to support the board workshop.
Well, you, you'll be, you'll be in Japan, I think, right?
Yes. The next week, I'll be in Minnesota, I can support, I mean, board, I can support virtually, though.
Well, I think we're just going to do June eighth, and that's fine. Again, you know, I think when we had our board orientation, you're going to set up a meeting with them anyways, talk about budget, so you can do it after June eighth, or, you know, just have a conversation with them, whatever. Okay, I need a motion to approve the following board meeting dates. We're going to move August to the twenty-fourth, and we're going to move Decembers to the fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven-zero. Will you send them to our calendars? Isn't that what you don't want you?
Yes, please. Yes, otherwise, yeah.
So, going forward, Elizabeth's going to be the board secretary. Okay, Mary Graper, travel reimbursement?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Six-zero-one. Okay, does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I need to pull J.
Okay, we'll move an item J out?
C.
C?
And, never mind, she already called it J.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
So, I need a motion to approve sand, item C.
C and J. I was on it then, I promise.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
We never got a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second, I'll second.
I see the president next year.
Yeah, probably not.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item C, Dave?
Last meeting, we, we discussed, discussed pretty lengthy the, a couple policies. BDDH, is that correct?
Yep, and then KC.
And KC. There's three readings of the policies, correct? How does that work? When, when, if you're going to change, tweak, when do you need to do that?
In these three readings, so, I think we're, we can follow up on that conversation, I didn't think it warranted it, but we were having a little bit of a side debate as to when it was enacted, because the board takes action, you know, in consent agenda. So, I think, and I mean, think more, the normal, the more normal flow, and that doesn't mean we're doing anything wrong, but is, the readings, there's no action taken on them, and they haven't become policy, so we were kind of working through that, kind of thinking out loud. There, the, I guess the nuance is that we actually take action on it. Granted, it's in consent agenda, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be live until the board takes final action on it.
So, next month then will be final action for these?
That would be correct, yeah, yeah.
And is, is that the time then to make changes?
You can make changes tonight.
But if you make changes, though, do they still have to be three-month processing?
No, no, we'll just do, we'll just do a third reading next month.
So, that's, that's a good question.
So you don't have to reread them after you make changes?
Yeah, and I should have.
And some districts honestly don't do the three readings.
No.
They say approve them in one, or disapprove them. We just, our history is, you guys get to see them three times. And after your first reading, any changes that you want made, they're made. If you look at the, the new version, so you're, you're seeing it twice.
But changes could, can still be made next meeting?
Correct.
And they don't require, doesn't require the third?
Yeah, so the idea was, you know, you know, with the two new board members, you know, now they have to bite at the apple, so to speak.
Sure, to get, to give feedback on those.
And to give feedback on them, and then if they want to make proposed changes. You know, obviously, we have to go through the legal process to make sure that they make the proposed changes, that it's okay. So we may have to postpone something, if something happens next meeting for legal review. But other than that...
I just wasn't real clear as to when you could make changes, and then if they have to be pre-read.
Well, well, the other thing also is, you know, we have the policy committee. So, let's say someone came to me in December and said, or to the board, and said, hey, I want to review BDDH again. Well, then, we would probably send it to the policy committee, and then let them discuss it there, and then bring it back, and that's like...
I see.
So, you know, so some, anybody can, and plus, with the way BDDH is working, you know, it's an operational issue. know, it's an operational issue and remember we talked last month about nine times out of ten, what's gonna happen is if someone wants to change a policy, we're gonna send it to the policy committee and let them iterate over it, you know, so they do the legal reviews and all that and then come back and then, you know, do it. But, you know, so if Kyle and/or Beth wanna take it by the apple, you know, either this month or next month would be the time to do it.
I was following pretty closely the meeting last month. I think most of the concerns were around the responsibilities and roles of the board president and you were covering that appropriately, I think.
Well, the other thing also is we increased the amount of time for public comments and the amount of time individuals can speak. And then we also, you know, we're changing the way individuals can get stuff on the agenda. You know, now they, you know, they have to have that meeting with the superintendent and then once they have that meeting with the superintendent and don't get satisfaction, then they, then they provide that. And we also talked about they're gonna provide materials to us, they had gotta provide it a week before. So, you know, we had those nuances put in there and apparently MSB was okay with all that, so.
So, okay, that does actually, sorry, I remember one thing. Regarding the public comments, we extended the amount of time.
By five minutes.
Correct. We restricted it to members that are residents of the district.
And then also gave individuals another minute, I think, to speak, if I remember.
Okay. What about the instances, what if, you know, one of our elected officials wanted to attend the meeting and comment on something and if something's not on the agenda, are we going to allow for one-off situations like that or no?
So if it's not on the agenda, you know, then we have to have a motion to suspend.
Sorry, I think I'll rephrase that. If, let's say, one of our state reps or state senators wanted to join the meeting and they wanted to make a comment on an agenda item or something like that, they're technically not a member of, of resident in this district or potentially, they could be, but probably they're not. But they are, they represent our district in Jefferson City. Probably a wild one-off scenario, but I think it's worth discussing.
So typically, the way Robert's rules would work on that is we make a motion to suspend the rules and then allow, and then the motion would be to allow a non-resident speaking public comments. And then because we're usurping rights of other board members, you gotta have that two-thirds majority to approve it. So in other words, if all seven of us are here, five of us have to say yes. So if it's, so if four say yes and three say no, then that rule would not be suspended. So that, that's how you, that's how you would get a warrant.
How does it work if, if say said representative is invited?
Well, then, well, I could make. Remember, Representative Myers, remember, he was on the agenda.
That's, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, so.
So they could be invited and put on the agenda.
Yeah, put on the agenda, yeah, we do that and we do that every year. And then we have a, that's when we have a conversation. But to Kyle's point, but let's say X gets on the agenda and that representative doesn't like it or doesn't like it and he or she wants to show up and, and say something, well, right now, the way the public comment policy is written, that individual, our state rep lives in Warrington, so he or she, well, he, because it's he, but he could not come and speak in public comments unless we did suspend the rules and then, and then, and then that way, then that's how that would work.
I think it's a highly unlikely scenario where, you know, somebody like the state rep would attend our meeting and not be in our agenda, but, you know, it's a chance of it happening, so I'm just curious how that would be addressed.
Roberts, and that's what, and by my understanding, Roberts' rules, that's how you would address it. He would suspend the rules and then, and then allow that thing.
That's all I have.
Okay, anything else on item C? I don't know.
I'll make a motion to.
Hold on, I, I, Beth wanted to say something.
Oh, sorry.
I just had a question. On KC, so that is the policy that encompasses the requirement to have the community engagement plan, is that right? And you said, if I recall, that with what we have in place today, we are already well within compliance for that, right? No changes to be made?
Yeah, we could, we could check the box on compliance. I am fully confident. I think the further conversation was, we were coming out of CSEP to see if we wanted to add anything from Elizabeth's subgroup that might make the community, or the community engagement plan, and so we were kind of playing until, and, and CSEP is slated for approval. It may get delayed, I'm not anticipating that for next month.
Right.
So following that, we should start developing that community engagement plan and then bring that to the board for approval.
Okay, got it.
Anything else? Now, Heidi?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the MSB twenty twenty-three update.
Sorry.
A motion, second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven zero. Item J. Aaron and Kyle, is there any specific individuals you need to pull from? Yes. Okay, who do you need to pull? Mackenzie Lewis. Okay, pull her.
Madison Love.
Madison Love, okay. So what we're gonna do is we are going to approve this list, Sands, Mackenzie Lewis and Madison Love. Any, anybody else in here? Okay. I need a motion to approve the athletic co-curricular, extra-duty extended contract list for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Sands.
Sands.
And, and.
Lewis and Love.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
There's a motion, second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Now, I need a motion to approve Mackenzie Lewis.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Six zero one, and just mark in the minutes that Kyle abstained due to the fact he's related to Mackenzie.